Dr. Masetti, good evening. This is your Spanish interpreter. I'm just doing a sound check. Can you hear the interpreter okay?
Yeah, we can hear you Claudia.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you President Gonzalez Mares.
Perfect, thank you.
We've got public on, we're just waiting for the last trustees to join. We will have quorum tonight based on our attendance preliminary attendance check. But we will not have all trustees. President Gonzalez Mares, yep, we are good to go.
Okay, thank you Dr. Masetti.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Let's call the meeting to order. My name is Elba Gonzalez Mares and this is the meeting of the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a special board meeting tonight that all can participate in remotely via Zoom. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. To access interpretation from a computer, click on the interpretation icon on the bottom of your screen from within the Zoom application. On a mobile device, click on the more button on the bottom of your screen and choose language interpretation from within the Zoom application. This is a separate channel that will allow you to hear English to Spanish translation concurrently. Please note interpretation services are not available when you join our meeting by calling in. Our interpreter for tonight's meeting is Claudia Lindgren. May we have these directions translated on our English channels for our Spanish speaking families can access the instructions.
Gracias a todos. Los servicios de interpretación van a estar disponibles para esta junta. Para tener acceso a los servicios, por favor, de dirigirse a la parte inferior de su pantalla, ustedes ven el símbolo de mundo, pueden hacer un clic y elegir el idioma de español. Si ustedes tienen acceso a, con su teléfono móvil, lo que pueden hacer es donde vean usted, decir el símbolo de más o también donde dice more, ahí pueden ustedes elegir la interpretación, la lengua de interpretación dentro de la aplicación de su, va a ser un canal separado. Desgraciadamente, los servicios de interpretación no se encuentran disponibles para las personas que se unen a esta junta telefónicamente. La interpretación se va a ejecutar de una manera simultánea. Estamos asustados.
Gracias. Specific instructions on how to participate in the meeting are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, nvusd.org/Board. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, student or member Ben?
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz is absent today. Trustee Gracia is absent. Trustee Riser?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Shoe?
Present.
Trustee Dooley?
Here.
Quorum present, thank you.
Thank you Vera. Thank you for joining us tonight for our Napa Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. Public participation remains virtual online only. This meeting tonight is in accordance with the open meeting rules in the state of California for the Governor's Order and Assembly Bill 361. I'm going to start tonight with some basic instructions on how we are going to be using Zoom and involve the members of the community. All Board of Education trustees and the superintendent are in video throughout the entire board meeting. Members of the community will not be on video and will be muted except during public comment. During public comment, any member of the community that wishes to speak must raise their hand using the raised hand feature in Zoom. You will be unmuted and will be provided three minutes to speak. Instructions on how to raise your hand are available on the district's website at nvusd.org/Board. Tonight's meeting is a special meeting of the board and there will be no public comment on non-agenda items. You may make public comment on agendaized items only. Alright, so we are now conducting our next item which is our flag salute. So, Dr. Masetti, I know we don't have trustee Gracia here, he usually does the, there we go.
We have a backup plan.
Awesome, perfect. Alright, I know when we were last time in the boardroom, I think it was Robin who was next, but since she's not here, I'm gonna go around the room again and ask trustee Dooley to lead us in the flag salute place.
Sure. I'm gonna stand.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item is an announcement. This is the announcement that this meeting is live streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced and located on the district webpage at nvusd.org. The public can join the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom. Participation instructions and the process for public comment can be found on the district webpage. Next item is approval of special session agenda.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Dooley, second by trustee Chu. Student Board Rep?
Hi.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Propose or abstain? Motion passes, thank you. Next item is our action items in regards to general services. It's a discussion and approval of resolution number 22-08, authorizing continued use of remote teleconferencing provisions pursuant to Assembly Bill 361 or AB 631 and Government Code Section 54953.
I move to approve.
All second.
A first by trustee Dooley and a second by trustee Water. Do I have any public comments, Mr. Michaels, on this item?
Yes, we do. First speaker will be El Grega. Go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so hi, everybody. I'm actually, this, hold on, if you could just bear with me. So if our children are able to attend school in person, then the standard is set. I think it's pretty clear. It's safe enough for them, it's safe enough for you. Unless you hold yourself to a different standard than our kids, if that's true, then the issue is really serious. Is this a classic rules for thee but not for we situation? It seems you might all have a grave misrepresentation if that's the truth of what it means to be a school board member. You're here to serve us, which means you have to be present. You're here to serve our children, our families, our community for the purpose of educating our kids. Not creating hostile, uninviting, uninvited, masked, sterile, albeit virtual world for educators and families to grow the quality of life that kids have in and through school. So parents working together with teachers to enhance their children's education is essential. Right? Us being together for them is the most powerful thing because we know that school is one world and home is one world, but those kids that really succeed have parents and teachers that work together, right? We know when we have kids that need, why do you have counselors at school? Right? Kids that need extra help emotionally, you guys have that emotional support at school for them. Why? If we're two different worlds, right? If we don't get to approach you and say, hey, I think you could do better here. I think this needs to be changed. I have an opinion about this. Especially if you don't want to hear it and we can't approach you with our hearts open and see your faces and experience this together for real, then what is it? I don't know if you've noticed, the quality of communication keeps diminishing instead of advancing. Even our kids' test scores, there's no progression. We're not looking for commonalities or compromises. It's just do what you say because someone else told you to say it and you have no responsibility for it. We're asking you to face us, to be with us. We are needing to unite for our kids' sake, not just perpetuate hate, division, lies because you're too afraid to step out and be accountable. We demand that you stop hiding behind computers and narratives and be vulnerable and authentic with us, all of us. We work as a community, engaging, sharing one another's experiences, learning from each other's mistakes and successes. How can we do this when we are behind a screen? We know that our kids didn't thrive with online learning. Our Board of Supervisors is in person this whole entire time in Napa. We ask that you follow their lead. They're at least willing to look at us. So, you know, really, 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 not because we want to tell you what to do, but we don't want you us to tell us what to do anymore. We want to come together and work together for our kids' sake. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas.
Next speaker.
Yes, next speaker is Meredith. Go ahead, please.
Hi, this is my first time joining a remote meeting like this and I just, I just wanted to share concern that I have that I would, I would really rather be in person and I think we would all rather be in person and I question why the board is choosing to stay remotely when we do have other government agencies running with in person as well as our schools and basically almost the rest of the, our society is all running in person. And so what would be the real solid reason why this particular board cannot? And I, I do echo what that previous person was saying of wanting to come together and work together for solutions. And I'm sure that's what the board is wanting to do too. And as your community and the parents, I have a parent in your school district. I am a parent in your school district and I would just ask that we all show up together and work on a solution. So thank you for the time.
Next speaker.
Yes, next speaker is Francine. Go ahead, please.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to call this out for what it is. First of all, I have three minutes and by the Constitution, the First Amendment, I can say whatever I want for three minutes. You are not allowed to mute me. This is a bunch of bullshit and you all know it. We've had it. You guys are hiding behind Zoom because you do not want to deal with parents coming in front of you demanding answers. You guys are a bunch of chicken shits who refuse to come out into the public and do your job. So let me get this straight. It's okay for literally thousands of tourists to come to Napa, that's safe. Every single weekend to wine and dine and spend their money. It's okay for all of our children to be in school every single day with their masks on. God forbid they take off their mask, but they're there with their masks on, with their teachers, around their friends, eating, talking, blah, blah, blah. Supposedly learning, but we know that's not really happening. So that's okay. It's fine for the Board of Supervisors to have their meetings up close and personal, but for some reason you guys are afraid to get a room full of parents to hear what we have to say. Now, my children are grown, but I am speaking on behalf of helping other parents protect their children from the vaccine mandates, from critical race theory, from also other things that I can go on and on about. Horrific things that you guys want to start indoctrinating our children with. Do your job, get a town hall together and buck up, grow a pair, you know what, and listen to what the parents have to say. You guys are pathetic, you're chicken shits, and this is, we're through, we're done with this. That's all.
Next speaker.
Yes, next speaker is P. Demick, go ahead, please.
We're not hearing anything, Mr. Michaels.
Oh, hi. Alright, I'm here. Hi, I just would like to encourage you all. Can you hear me now? Oh, the clock's starting, so you guess you can't. I just like encourage you guys all to meet in person. This is getting ridiculous now. You guys are like the only ones and I don't get that. Last week, we all saw on social media, the Barbara Nemco and a whole bunch of her teacher, I think it was the Napa Valley Education Foundation had a party and there was thirty to forty educator there, all in attendance. They were in a public restaurant. There, a restaurant that was very small. It's about eighteen hundred square feet, indoor and outdoor. There were many people indoor. Guess what? Nobody wearing a mask, nobody wearing a mask. And that's great. I wouldn't either. They're silly. They do nothing. But they're all together, educators all together, drinking, eating, handing out awards and they have no, they weren't scared. Nobody looks scared. You guys, I don't know if you're trying to look scared or you want us to be scared. We're not scared anymore. We're done with this. We're done with this. We're moving on. It's time to moving on. You guys got your vaccine. You're all gonna be healthy. No worries. You need to meet in person. You need to look at us in the face and you need to grow up. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Yes, next speaker is the initial K. Go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, it's nice to see all your faces tonight. I just wanted to call in and say that the hypocrisy being displayed by your board is shameful. You guys have no logical or database reasoning to keep from resuming in-person meetings. Children are in school, extracurricular activities have resumed, holiday performances and concerts continue, tourists will travel here from all over the world. It's glaringly apparent that this board's motive is to keep parents at a distance every chance they get, which is truly disgraceful. You all need to take accountability for the responsibility you have to serve your community and stop passing the buck. And that's it.
Next speaker.
Yes, next speaker is Aisley. Go ahead, please.
Hi, to the board, I just wanted to say, please keep holding meetings online if it makes you feel safer and protects your health. To everyone who's on right now, who has been speaking about meeting back in person, I just want to say that the board is obviously working under the supervision of the state and with recommendations given to them due to COVID. Back to the board, I've been to Board of Supervisors meetings with the same people who are on tonight and I would not want to hold in-person meetings with them either. A group of unvaccinated, try to be unmasked people yelling in a confined space isn't ideal. And they have been known to harass as well as been on video like breaking into the Board of Supervisors chambers and being yelled at by officers to get out because they're not allowed to. Now back to speaking to the people who are on tonight, who compared all of this to a school setting and said, practice what you preach to the board. You are not kids. These board members are not kids, except for the student rep, cheers to you. You guys are all adults and it's sad that you have less composure than the actual kids that you are discussing. You guys cannot show this type of composure in person. You have demonstrated that. You've demonstrated, you can't even show it online. Chicken shits, really? We've gone down that far? The only recommendation that I can make to the board is that the only thing being hindered here are people's faces, which I don't think we're missing anything. But you know, if you want to open it up and actually listen to people's recommendations, then maybe turn on the camera feature, but otherwise stay safe and protect yourselves. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Yes, next speaker is Jacqueline. Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm in an area where I don't have very good service, so I'm hoping that I don't get dropped or I'm not too broken up during this. Which is another reason why I hate doing this over the computer because I don't, I'm not always in an area that has good service. Anyway, I just, I really think that we should resume in-person meetings. So many of the people that went before me spoke so much what I was gonna say. So they've taken a lot of the words I were gonna, that I was gonna use. But I do want to reiterate that school boards all across the state of California are open, they're meeting in person, they're facing the parents face to face. They haven't started attending school board meetings until this year. I have kids that have gone through the school district. I have grown kids, have kids in the school district currently, and I have one that's getting ready to go into the school district, but she's not going to because I don't agree with what you guys are doing. Anyway, I know it's easier when you don't have to see our faces. We all know it's easier to text somebody, to email somebody and not face them in person. It's time to start having these difficult conversations face to face. Um, yeah, I agree, performances are happening in the county. I was appalled to see the fundraiser and Barbara Nemco out and about and all shoulder to shoulder. It's hypocrisy is just becoming sickening. This, I just, this is becoming a lot. And you have people calling in from other states who actually, like Aisley, do not have students. She was a student herself with my children. Like, this is getting ridiculous. Us parents who actually have students in the school district want to meet with you guys face to face. This is, it's like, what's it gonna take? I guess that's what I want to hear from you guys. What's it gonna take? Because other districts in California are doing it face to face. So I would like an answer. What take for you guys? Is it a vaccine percentage? Is it a certain color tier? It's just enough already. That's all I have to say.
Next speaker.
Yes, next speaker is Amy Martenson. Go ahead, please.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, it's pretty disappointing that we're here again and that we're doing this again. I have the same questions as the previous speakers. When is this gonna end? What, what local data are you using to just drive your decision making? So far, the only thing I've heard is that Gavin Newsom has still declared a state of emergency. But he declared that back in March 2020 and he actually just extended it to March 2022. So does that mean that you're not gonna meet in person until March 2022? You know, just because Gavin Newsom says it's a state of emergency, that shouldn't be your only bar for holding in-person meetings. We, these are local meetings. You need to be looking at local conditions. And really do need to say, what metrics are you using to decide when you will reopen? Personally, I don't think you have any reason not to open them right now based on everything else that we've been talking about. The fact that school has been in person since last year. There have been many indoor events at the district auditorium. There was a showing of the film Butter about bullying at the district auditorium. There's a winter concert, an Apahai winter concert coming up in the district auditorium. So if it's safe enough for school and for concerts and movies indoor, it's certainly safe enough to hold a board meeting. And those aren't rights. It's not a right to attend a movie. It's not a right to attend a concert, but it's a right to peacefully assemble and to address your elected officials. Those are constitutional rights. And so to single that out, that should be the last thing that you're taking away. Is people's right to peacefully assemble, to speak before their elected officials. There should be a very, very high bar for that and that, that bar has not been met. When a previous trustee said, well, we're in the middle of a pandemic. Look at the data. We need critical thinkers here. Right now, the last report of hospitalizations at the Queen, there was one person in ICU, by the way, fully vaccinated. That's it. I wonder how many other people were in the ICU or in the hospital for heart attacks or drug overdoses or suicide attempts. We don't see those, that data every single day. If you look at the statewide data, they're the same number of deaths every year. Twenty twenty was no higher. In fact, twenty seventeen was higher than twenty twenty. And then I asked you to think about this. Would you really know we were in a pandemic if you weren't constantly being reminded? If you weren't watching the news telling you that you're in a pandemic? If everybody wasn't wearing masks, if we didn't have testing site on our corner? If you turned off the news and we took off the masks and we didn't have the testing sites, you wouldn't not know we were in a pandemic. Therefore, we're not in a pandemic. Nobody needed to be told in the Middle Ages that they were in a pandemic during the bubonic plague. They saw people dying around them. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Yes, next speaker is Deanna. Go ahead, please.
Hello, guys. This is Deanna Bowers. I'm a teacher on leave this year and hey, I just wanted to share a couple of things. You guys know, some of you know who I am. I can't, I'm coming from a place of kids' mental health as I have for years and years and years. I just want to share with you guys. The kids are watching. They're watching the lead of the adults and they're also watching what's happening beyond our borders. I have been in twelve stadiums in four states over the past twelve weeks. I've sat with ranges of fans from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand unmasked people every weekend in these collegiate football stadiums. Our kids are watching Saturdays on TV. They're seeing Michigan storm the field. We're not seeing spikes. So please consider the mental health of our kids and how they view the adults who are supposed to be making these decisions. Because like I said, I've been out of town four days a week for the last twelve weeks and every time I come back to this state, I shake my head. And I wonder, what are we doing? Everybody's back to normal. So I just encourage you to look beyond the borders. Think of what the kids are thinking of you and the decisions you're making and how that impacts them and their mental health. Thanks, guys.
Next speaker.
Next speaker.
Well, we have no further, uh, public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Yeah, uh, we had, um, a first and a second in public comment. So any discussion on this item from the board?
I don't mind beginning it. Well, I just canceled the trip, uh, because of, uh, of the variant that's, um, coming up. It was, uh, recommended and I did. Um, there are other people, I guess, who are, uh, thrill seekers. I, I do look past the borders of California, and I see other states with much higher, um, rates of transmission than we have. Because, um, we are trying to keep the lid on things. Ma- wearing a mask is important. Our students, yes, they're, they're back in school and they're happy to be back in school, and I'm glad they're there too. But they're in a controlled setting where the adults are wearing masks and where, um, and where the children are wearing masks. Several speakers mentioned our tourist economy. And, yeah, there's, I, I live downtown. I'm, I'm in the thick of it, and I see a rather, uh, devil may care attitude uh, towards mask-wearing from people who I presume are visiting our area. And, uh, I, I, I don't know, there's this idea that Napa is a solid border and everything happens here and is contained here. When actually, we are extremely permeable and we do welcome thousands of people from all over the place into our community, because this is, this is the economy here. Um, but it doesn't mean that people, uh, don't get sick. And staying home and, um, I don't know, not watching the news, not reading about, uh, not reading about it isn't exactly a solution to staying healthy, I think. And I look forward to open it, to opening up, um, in person, but I have to, uh, I have to say that, um, when we do open it up in person, anybody who comes up to, to our podium and, uh, uses, you know, really remarkable profanity, as we heard earlier, is going to be escorted out of the room. That is, that is absolutely not allowable. Maybe, uh, maybe the standards, um, have, uh, sagged a bit because, uh, we're all on these screens, but no, that won't be tolerated for a minute. It's not going to be a free-for-all. Done.
I'll, I'll go next. I, I kind of want to dovetail on what Trustee Water just mentioned. There are constitutional rights to peacefully assemble and to, to speak. But those rights are not absolute. They are bound by rules regarding the time, place, and manner in which you can speak and, and assemble. Um, those rules are, uh, I mean, this is simple constitutional law, um, that, that I've, I've studied as, as a lawyer, so, um, I'm not speaking out of turn here. But, uh, it doesn't allow people to, um, come and, and speak beyond what the, the agenda item is or beyond the, uh, jurisdiction of what is our, our, our board, uh, governs. Um, it doesn't allow for disruption. It doesn't allow, it, it allows for agencies to provide their own rules of conduct to, uh, allow us to perform the work that we are required to perform. We are, uh, conducting the business of the district and public comment is an integral part to that. But I find it very confusing that we had a dozen or so commenters today that all were given three minutes to petition, uh, this board. And yet, we're being accused of not providing the opportunity for people to petition this board. This the, the medium that we're using, the virtual medium, um, is a a provision that, that is allowed under the law based on the prevailing conditions in the area of a public, uh, health emergency. Uh, it's not just the governor's declaration of emergency, but the county, uh, has declared an emergency as well based on local conditions. Uh, it's, you know, we can set up as many false equivalencies as we want, um, to try to compare a board meeting to a, a football game. Um, they're different. They're not, um, i- i- it's not the same conditions, it's not the same, uh, locations, it's not the same, uh, situation. So, um, I think that there's, there's substantial evidence showing that we are in a state uh, of where social distancing, physical distancing is, uh, recommended for prevention of the transmission of a deadly disease. Uh, I think if we didn't watch the news, we didn't do any of those, you know, we would still, you know, there have been millions of people around the world who have died. So suggesting that there's not a pandemic, uh, is, is, is difficult to, to swallow. I, I support the continued use of this medium because it provides for the public the opportunity to speak. And it, uh, maintains the, the physical distancing that will help prevent, uh, further transmission of a deadly disease.
I, I would just like to say that, um, I don't at all feel that we are being cowardly and hiding. We are all here, um, listening to the statements of the people that called in. Um, and to the caller that said that, that scolded us that the kids are watching. Well, if there were any kids watching this board meeting, I think it's the conduct of the callers that would be called into question about modeling appropriate behavior um, and being respectful. So, um, I want to echo Trustee Water's comment about, um, conduct and respectful behavior. And I also look forward to having in-person meetings. I'm a new trustee, and we've been in this format since I joined the board. And I look forward to that when it's safe and appropriate. Um, I, I'm absolutely gobsmacked by the caller that says, um, if we didn't, if we weren't being told that there was a pandemic, th- then we wouldn't know it, and that means there's not a pandemic. We're losing a thousand Americans a day right now. A thousand people a day are dying of COVID. And for people like me who do like to stay informed about science-based, fact-based, data-driven reporting about this pandemic, uh, you're aware that there's now a new variant that is potentially even more um, transmissible than the Delta variant that has kept this pandemic building steam over the summer. We've surpassed the number of deaths in our, in this year already that we had in twenty twenty, when the pandemic, we had hoped in twenty twenty, was at its worst. So, um, in response to the callers saying, "We're tired of this, we're over this, we're done." You know, if only wishing made it true, we would all love to be done with pandemic, with the death, with the limitation, with the, um, with all of the difficulties and the constraints that we are currently operating with. I'd also like to say that, um, the, the reason that California is in better shape than some of the states in, across our borders is precisely because of the commitment to public health mitigation strategies that we are enacting here, and this is an example of that. It's not true that school boards across the state are meeting in person and that we are the exception. In fact, I just watched, um, coverage of a school board meeting in Hayward, and they were all also on Zoom. So I feel, it feels to me a little bit like a false flag operation to say, to to decry us for depriving you of your right to see us in person. That's not the point of public comment, to see, to see our human faces in person. The point is to share your positions, to share your point of view, to give us important input about your feelings and your, your points of view related to children, educating the children of our community, and that's what this forum allows. And I would also like to point out that, um, those callers that seem very eager to come in person and call us names at the podium instead of behind Zoom, there's anyone hiding behind Zoom right now, it feels like the people calling me chicken shit. But I, um, I would say, I think we also need to consider the community members that are having increased access and are feeling able to safely access our meetings because they're not in person. There may be far more community members that are joining in our meetings that would not feel safe enough either because of their own health conditions or because they have a vulnerable family member at home or the be- becau- for their own reasons, whatever their reasons are. So if, were we to return to in-person while we are still in a public health emergency, yes, it has been going on since twenty twenty. It's a global historic pandemic, and it's not over. So berating us for not pretending that it's over feels really misguided and, um, hostile. You know, we're all here to show up to govern the school district and make the best possible informed decisions that we can as we go about the business of running a, a large school district and educating our students and supporting our community in doing that. So, um, I, I'm really, I guess I'm not surprised because this isn't the first time that we've been called names for, for following public health recommendations. But I am firmly in the camp of, we listen to the public health experts at the county level and the state level, and we do what's recommended and what's safest. And if you want to call me names for prioritizing public health in my community, feel free to do so, but that's gonna be my choice every time.
So the, I think the main job that we have is to educate our students. And I think we've seen from last year, being in distance learning, hybrid learning, whatever format it is, it didn't really work as well as the kids being in school. So how do we make sure that the kids remain in school? Not contribute to outbreaks? To make sure we have layered protective risk mitigation ways of making sure our kids can go to school? I mean, the la- latest, um, data is showing that we are still in the red tier. Um, but we have no outbreaks in schools. And I really would like to keep it that way because I, my kids need to be in school. I think all of our district kids need to be in school because that's how they learn. And how do we, as a school board, do that? It's to not have congregated settings, but still provide an avenue where people can share their views and thoughts to us, which I, I think in the, in the past year since I've been on the board, it seems to, you know, i- it's been pretty good in that we are offering this online system for both people who are not really comfortable in coming and meeting us in person and others who would like to meet us in person. We, we've heard many of them on our meeting today. So I'd like to keep our ability to have risk mitigation, to prioritize our children, to be able to be in school. Because I, from what I'm hearing today is, you know, they, they're all appreciative of the fact that the kids are in school. And the reason why is because we are taking whatever, um, control we can have to make sure that they're, they can remain in school. I mean, we can't control the visitors coming here. We can't control other boards from meeting in person, but we can control our own um, ways of conducting ourselves to ensure our objective of educating our kids actually happen. So I do support this resolution.
And I, I just want to clarify, I think as of today, we've moved into the yellow tier, just, uh, everything you said is a hundred percent true, but today it was announced we moved into the yellow, just for the record.
President Gonzalez, um, before you move towards, uh, potentially, uh, concluding board deliberation and discussion, um, in the vote, I ju- I just would like to make a couple of comments, Superintendent, does that work?
Yes, please go ahead, Dr. Masetti.
So, um, um, I, uh, I, I do want to just recognize a couple of things and just bring clarity to the public. So this resolution, even if the boardroom was open, a resolution would need to be passed if we wanted to allow for any online engagement. So I just, I, I want to take, um, these opportunities to educate the public um, that there are, that, that would be a requirement. So even when the board determines that, um, it is safe and, and just, like, again, just to restate for, for the record, this is a special board meeting. We're doing a special board meeting where we're all participating remotely. But our typical format for regular business meetings are, the trustees do, uh, come into the boardroom. And we are electing, our, our decision-making up until now, and we'll see what your vote is tonight, has been to continue, we come together in the boardroom, but to continue to provide Zoom access because our fundamental guiding principle is we want as many people, um, uh, uh, we want as many people to access the meeting as, as possible. Uh, the school district, in response to all kinds of issues, declining enrollment, which, you know, tethered to declining revenue, et cetera, et cetera. We have had some, some intense topics. And, um, the flip side, and, and this has been stated to me, I'm just letting you know as superintendent, wh- when I'm out in the community, is the concern of many of these topics, people feel that it, it, during the emergency conditions, they would not feel comfortable coming to the boardroom, and they would view it, uh, as a direct barrier to access as the district continues to navigate complex issues due to forces beyond our control, you know, we've, for, for us, the fundamental issue really has been declining enrollment. So we've had to do tough things, uh, as you know, layoffs, school closures, in response to all of that, which has brought uh, an increased amount of public participation to our board meetings, and many, many, um, uh, uh, community members have stated, parents have stated, that it is the remote access that has allowed them to be able to engage in ways that historically the community has not engaged. So I can just reiterate for the board and the public that our participation has actually increased um, vis a vis this format. So for us, we just want to continue to engage in the ongoing assessment, the continual every thirty days, as the, um, legislation requires, assessing, um, access. The access point in, um, our community while the, the emergency conditions still exist. And what is going to continue to, um, solidify access for public participation, because our interest is actually, I think, the opposite of, of, of what the concern is here. Our interest is always, what are the mechanisms to increase access? And we have seen over and over and over that the app, the, the, the amount of public participation has skyrocketed um, in comparison to, um, when folks had to come in person. I also just want to reiterate that many, many, many people, um, from our, uh, the American Canyon, um, a community have reiterated to me um, that this, this virtual access, they have felt fundamentally, um, included um, i- in the engagement element of our governance because of this, um, access. And that's not to say that, oh, you know, that's the sole reason or whatnot, that to create access for American Canyon. But, um, we do, again, it's just, you know, in these conditions, there's a lot of hesitation from many members of the public um, uh, to, um, to, to come into public space um, in the way that potentially, uh, we would if we eliminated the Zoom access. And, and I think that we would get a lot, a lot of concern and pushback from many people who have appreciated the increased access. So I just want to have mindfulness around that. And then to understand when the board, if and when the board gets to a, a determination that, yes, open up the boardroom, um, that we, we may still have to pass this resolution if we want to maintain remote, at, remote access as well. So there's, you know, i- i- and you're gonna see an evolution of this as the conditions evolve and change. So I just kind of want to take an opportunity to educate the public that um, also, the, the other benefit is that, right now, the, the governance team is eight, the seven trustees and myself as, as the staffer, the superintendent of schools. If we don't have this resolution, and let's say, uh, you know, uh, uh, members of the governance team were to contract COVID and had to stay back, we would not be able to conduct the business of the district because if you have symptoms and/or, um, have contracted COVID, we would have to cancel meeting, uh, meetings if we couldn't, um, attain quorum, right? So the, having again, this resolution positions the district to have that flexibility. to be able to convene remotely if necessary in that scenario as well. So many districts are passing the resolution every 30 days in order to have that safety net of making sure trustees can continue to suit up, show up and conduct the business of the district in case there are symptoms and/or COVID contraction amongst the governance team. The business can still be conducted in this format. That's another reason districts continue to pass the resolution as allowable, you know, with the governor's flexibility in this assembly bill. So just wanted to put those points out there.
Thank you, Dr. Masetti. You know, I won't add much more because I agree completely with every single comment shared by the trustees. And that was my thought exactly, it was just, you know, one thing that I've learned with the pandemic, and I think many of us have, is just a lot of the adaptation, right? This has been unprecedented and I'm just very proud of the fellow trustees and the NVUSD staff and so, for working so hard to find those midpoints so that we can all get our work done, right? And this definitely has been a way for us to get our work done. And we've been able to do that. And we've been able to handle so much and include and provide those access points for our community. And so I, as a trustee, feel absolutely confident that I've been able to receive all forms of communication and information needed in order for me to conduct the work that I need to do. And I agree, I think something that's going to be really interesting is just, how does the future going to look like in our board meetings when we'll have in-person and then continue to have input? And so that's, you know, one of the very few good things about all of this is the learning opportunities. And this is one of those that I know that has increased our ability to connect with our community in more ways than I never had before, having been on the board pre-pandemic. So it's been fascinating actually to be able to see us transform and adapt and react and respond to the needs of our community. And it's more specifically to the needs of our students and our NVUSD team. And we've been able to do that very well. Well, that being said, as we are conducting our business tonight, we did have everyone on the board make comments. And we did have a first and a second motion, but yeah, Trustee Water, go ahead.
Well, I was wondering if we could have the student perspective from Emily Bit, Trustee Bit.
Yeah, I just wanted to like very quickly add something before we conclude because I heard a lot of discussion around students and wearing masks at school. And as a student that goes to in-person school every single day, I feel like I, along with my peers that have compassion, don't necessarily feel like small discomforts are a bad thing. Such as, you know, it can be uncomfortable to wear a mask every single day. But I do it because I want to keep my community safe. And I don't mind that small sacrifice, knowing that other students who have younger siblings that are unvaccinated or family members that, you know, that are elderly or something like that. I understand that their families might be at risk. And I have members of my family have a little brother who's like recently getting his vaccination. There's just circumstances and I understand us, from a student perspective, that, you know, I can't always have everything. There are sacrifices that I have to make. And I also think that being in a Zoom platform is really beneficial because throughout my last school year, throughout my junior year, so the end of 2020 and all throughout 2021, I had the opportunity to attend so many city council meetings all throughout the county. I went to American Canyon, Calistoga, Yountville. I went to countywide meetings and I got to interact with these local elected officials and get involved in things that I never could have before or never knew about before because of this online format. I've presented to multiple city councils. You know, Calistoga is really far away from American Canyon and without this Zoom platform, I wouldn't have been able to do that. And I think that having this option for parents, it allows parents to come on and voice their concerns, even though you're not necessarily face-to-face. It allows students to come on and voice their concerns. I've had friends be able to attend these meetings. I let them know that something is on the agenda and they hop on while doing their homework, multitasking, when they wouldn't have been able to drive like 20, 30 minutes to come to Napa to sit in the boardroom. And so as a student, I think that this is beneficial. And that's just my take on it.
Can I just elaborate? Thank you so much, Student Representative Bit, and thank you for prompting that, Trustee Water. I just do want to, I think the point being made by the student representative, I think it reiterates that concept of access. And that, you know, I know school districts who have let go of the remote access and just let it all go, aren't passing the resolution, are just doing the regular format. And there's been tremendous backlash from their communities, from the students and from parents who feel like the driving force behind that decision was in order to keep people away from the difficult issues, right? And so kind of the flipped narrative. And so I think what Student Representative Bit is just reiterating this concept that right now, again, we're actually hearing from more people than we have historically heard from consistently, meeting after meeting, whether it's a high-interest topic or a regular business meeting. We have more people participating, engaging and providing public comment than we have had historically. And I want to reiterate, students, parents and community members are all leveraging that access. So we are not, I think the organization has demonstrated that we are not fearful. We were actually one of the first K-12 systems in the state of California to open up campuses while everybody else stayed closed. So, you know, we've created access to all of our events. You know, we have been, I just want to reiterate this theme of continuing to provide access to the majority of people who want it and really demand it of us. Because the NVUSD community is highly engaged in their schools. And so we believe that having this option and flexibility allows for that engagement to really come in and touch the governance work that we do. So thank you for kind of pointing that out and reminding us of that in your own personal experience as a student and a youth leader in our community. Student Representative Bit, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for prompting that, Trustee Water. And thank you for your input, Student Board Rep Emily Bit. Okay, any remaining comments? All right, we did have a first and a second. This is a resolution, so I will ask Vera Morales to conduct roll call.
Yes, Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mendez.
Aye.
Trustee Ricer.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Dooley.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Our next item is now adjourned the special board meeting.
Move to adjourn.
A second.
First by Trustee Dooley, second by Trustee Chu. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.